Good evening. This is the February 21st meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's decisions will be published in the Record Journal on February 24th, 2017, which will be the effective date. Your variance will be also on Friday, February 24th, and that date is certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, March 12th, 2017. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Before I open the meeting, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first hearing tonight is 17003, a building coverage, front yard, landscape, sidewalk, parking, front yard, side back at 765 North Colony Road, Ricks on 5. Is someone here to present that?
This variance request from Moose for building coverage is 17.8 percent or 17.8 exists, and a maximum of 17 is permitted. Zero sidewalk where zero sidewalk exists and sidewalk is required. Front yard set of six feet, 30 feet, and 32 feet where six feet, 30 feet, and 32 feet exist, and 50 feet is required. Zero front yard landscaping for two of three front yards where zero front landscaping exists on two of three front yards, and front yard landscaping is required. 15 parking spaces where 15 parking spaces exist and 25 are required to allow expanded seating capacity use for the patio at 765 North Colony Road in an RF40 district. We also have a letter here from our, Amy Torres, the zoning enforcement officer, and we also have a letter from the planning and zoning, yeah, planning and, Wallingford Planning and Zoning. Should I read that one?
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, read.
Yes? Okay. At this meeting on February 15, 2017, the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission opt to file a report to the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with Section 9.1 H.E. of Wallingford Zoning Regulations regarding the subject application. Specifically, the P and Z express concern regarding the significant number of variances being sought. The fact that the need for these variances is the result of a decision by the applicant to designate and expand an outdoor dining area without first seeking the proper information or approvals, apparent ability of the applicant to reduce, eliminate the need for some of the requested variances, i.e. removing the unapproved shed in order to comply with coverage requirements, and general concerns regarding parking problems on the site.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
There's also another letter here, Mr. Chairman, which is also part of the application here, which deals with the application fees. It says, "Please accept this letter as a request on behalf of the applicant to reduce the application fee for the zoning application for our variance." That is what I have. Thank you.
I'll watch myself on that. Ms. Torres, can you explain this reduction in fee?
The applicant is seeking five variances, as you have just read, and one of them happens to be a repeat of the parking variance they sought earlier. So we, the office supports the reduction of the exorbitant fees that come along with five variances by $380, which would be the equivalent of one variance, the parking variance.
And what is the office's feeling on this?
That is, that is the office's feeling on it, that we support the reduction for the repeat of the parking variance and let the applicant absorb the remaining four, which would mean a $400 total as opposed to a $780 total for this application.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the parking fees, the application fees, sorry, on the parking variance for $380.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now would you explain your application?
Certainly. For the record, my name is Robert M. Montoya. I'm an engineer and land surveyor with offices in Meriden, Connecticut. The owner, the owners is with me.
Okay. My name is Typhon Moose, and I'm the part of the owner, and he's going to explain.
All right. Let me explain. I'll look up on the, on the drawing here.
There's a microphone on that table there. If you would pick it up and use it, please.
You all have a plan?
On the bottom, maybe?
What we have here is, first of all, a very small lot that's been existing for, since the '60s. This was originally an old Mr. Donut restaurant. Subsequently, it turned into Ricks on 5, and it passed through two, two owners since then. There was a shed on here before. It was falling apart, rotted out, so they put another one in place of it some years ago. We tried, in going over this with your staff, we've tried to reduce some of the variances that were requiring. Now, as you could see, this red line is the property line, and there is landscaping along this side, the west side of the property. There's none along the east side of the property and along the south of the side. We are adding some landscaping behind the shed on Beaumont Avenue, so that we are trying to fulfill the requirement of having landscaping on at least two of the sides. There's not enough area on this east sideline, Old Colony Road, to actually put any landscaping in. There's a small grass area here before, between the parking and the curb. There's also some of the parking area that overhangs into the, into the grass area, and we're bringing that back. If you look on your plan, you could see there's a small area that's going to be, the pavement will be removed, and that'll be grass, so at least trying to get them into being completely on the property. The patio area proposed, this was poured some years ago without getting a permit for it, but now we're trying to get a permit to use that patio for outside dining for part of the year, obviously. Now, we've reduced the size of that, and that, actually, if you look at the table on the new plans that we have, the parking requirement now is 24, not 25. We have 20 spaces, so we're asking for a reduction of those four. In addition, there's along East, along Route 5 here, there's parking that encroaches over the property line. There's actually two and a half here and one and a half, total of five spaces. We are in the process of getting an easement right from the state DOT to allow us. What they do is they'll allow you to do it as long as you hold them harmless for any, any problems that may have, that may arise from parking on that. That's in process right now with the state. That will give us a total of 20 spaces. On-site alone, we have 15 spaces. Reconfiguring it so that we do have a legitimate handicap space. They have one painted out there now, but it doesn't conform to the ADA requirements. So we're going to try and bring all the, all the spaces up to standards. The standard spaces here, nine by 18, and the handicap space as well. A detail of that is shown. So the patio area, if you see on your second sheet, will have a four-foot, three to four-foot planter around the perimeter of it, and on the north side and coming down partway along the south side, there will be, we're proposing a glass windscreen, if you will, six feet high, just to, just to encapsulate this portion of the patio. The square footage that we're over is actually 86 square feet over, which gives us, and that's existing condition right now, 17.8 percent of the area as opposed to 17 percent. So that's where we're requiring a variance on the area. In addition, there's two dumpsters out there, and we're, right now, they're just hanging out there. We're proposing to put a screened fence around that to make it a little bit more appealing for anybody coming down along Beaumont Street.
Thank you. Ms. Torres, there were a number of, and I can't seem to find it now, but a number of, oh, here it is, objects that the planning office had suggested that the applicant do in order to, more or less, like, comply.
Let me interject. Let me interject if I, if I may, and I know exactly where you're going. First of all, I'd like to make special note, which has already been raised in, in my comments, both to the applicant and to the board and the office's commentary, as well as Planning and Zoning Commission. This need for variances was initiated via violation, so in order to remediate the violation, the applicant needed to proceed with site plan approval. Thus, the need for variances. We have, the Planning and Zoning Commission is exercising its control in concert with, it's right, rather, in concert with the office's position, which is more can be done to become more compliant. There is an innate hardship with, with this parcel, with the three front yards. However, there was a dumpster, or a shed, rather, that was put in without approval that did increase or decrease the parking. It was a willful increase of use in capacity, which created the building coverage issues. So subsequently, the main, main reduction in variances that are necessary here, we're having trouble supporting, is the building coverage and, and the parking, which both can be either eliminated or decreased by some more site plan adjustments.
Is it my understanding the shed has been removed?
The shed is, shed is remaining, and it remains on the revised plans.
And there was something also in here about the parking spaces being not properly measured?
There's, they're, oh, they're properly measured, but there is concerns about the traffic flow, the striping of the parking, again, near this shed area in the rear, one of the rears of the, the restaurant. They're at an angle, and the drive aisle is slightly smaller than is required, and in order to make that turn, backing out of a space, it's, it's impossible. You have to back into the parking lot. So we would, we had asked the applicant to consider some alternatives, the one-way traffic, employee-only parking, straightening the lines and such, and again, this shed, which the need for the shed perhaps may not be there if we didn't increase the need for the use, for the capacity.
If I may.
Uh-huh.
The area of this building is very small. If you look at the plan, you see the crosshatched area is actually the area that's allowed for the restaurant use itself. The rest of it is for cooking and storage of equipment and supplies. Years ago, under the former owner, there was a shed that was put up here. This other shed was, again, like I said, it was falling apart, needed repair. They put another shed up in place of it. So the shed was always there. Technically, if they weren't coming in for anything, it would be a non-conforming use because it's been over there, over the three-year requirement. And I, and we understand that, being that we're coming before the commission for an approval of this, that the commission, the commission has a right to require everything else to be brought up to snuff. That would pose a real serious hardship because this building is just too small without having this. This, the only thing we could do, if it's 86 square feet over the area requirement, if we put a shed up there that was the same size, only four feet shallower on the width, it would be in conformance. Now, from a practical point of view, does that really make an appearance that it's any different than what would appear to be out there with this shed? I don't think it is. But if it's, that would bring us into conformance. As far as the parking goes, the removal of the shed would not enhance the parking at all. I drive a full-size SUV. I have no problem getting in here. I can either drive in and head-on into that parking, or I can back into that. We did designate these last two parking places as employee parking. Now, the other thing is that the employees do have an arrangement off-site for parking, and that doesn't come into play for the total count that's required for parking through these regulations, but it does help. Even though they don't, they have an easement, they don't have a permanent right on that land. In other words, if that person across the street decided to sell the property, that doesn't transfer the right to park over here. But we are reducing the impact. Now, I don't know how many people have stopped at this place, but I go by there quite a bit, and I've eaten there quite a bit, and if it's, if it's, the place is parked to capacity, and I don't feel like waiting, I'm just going to go someplace else. So it's not that it's going to cause a situation that's a traffic hazard to the traffic on either of the three streets that surround it. Requiring this shed to be completely removed would, would cause a hardship. We would have to come back in and ask for a variance to put another shed up, 86 square feet smaller, that we would be in conformance with it. So we're, that's why we're asking for that variance on that 86 square feet, which gives us the 0.7 percent over the average, over. Again, the configuration of the lot, and I've tried various arrangements for parking on this thing. This is the best fit as far as being able to get traffic in and out. And again, designating these two as employee parking, these two spaces are a lot easier to get out. I still have no problem getting in and out of there, but, you know, we are designating it as employee parking anyway. We're trying to, trying to bring the landscaping into compliance so that we're asking for a variance on really one side, on the old Colony Road. We do have sufficient landscaping on here, on the west side of the property. We have it, part of it on the north side, and we're adding some. And this landscaping here is also a buffer for the dumpsters and the shed itself. That's my argument as far as allowing the shed to remain.
You're requesting a variance, one of your variances is to, so you can rebuild that shed or replace that?
No, no, no. It's been replaced years ago, and that's why, I don't know what the size of the old one was, but there's, I don't know, but that was replaced by a 10 by 20, which is 200 square feet. That totaled with the square foot of the building gives us the 86 square feet over the area. Nobody ever calculated it before. Nobody ever gave it any thought.
I'm sorry. It was, it was about the same size, so the old shed was the same size. We just replaced it because it was broken parts, so we just replaced with the new one. It looks better now, so that's all. I mean, we didn't-
And it's sufficient for your needs?
I mean, we don't have any space, so we need the shed, definitely, so as is right now, so it's, it's good. It's usable.
Is it sufficient for their needs?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. You were made aware that if you remove the shed, you could eliminate at least two of these variances that you're coming before us tonight. Is that correct?
One variance would be for the square footage.
Mr. Chairman, they would eliminate, and, and board members, they would eliminate the coverage variance altogether, and it would decrease the parking variance by adding potentially another space.
Thank you. Well, you were made aware of that, and you considered it, and you decided not to do that?
No, when I, in discussing it with Amy, I said, you know, I will ask the commission if they go, being that it's only 86 square feet over, I don't think that's an exorbitant amount under the conditions that, that exist out there. I said, I, you know, if we took the thing, if we took the shed off completely, it would be a hindrance to their operation. Then what's the option? Then you replace another shed that's 86 square feet less. That would bring it into conformance, but would that be, visually, it would have the same effect.
Where would you place it at that point?
In the same location. There's, there's not many places that, there's no other option as far as putting a shed on there. And that, replacing or eliminating that shed would not help the parking. You wouldn't get an additional parking spot in there.
Okay.
And these are regulation-sized spaces that you've placed?
Yes, yes. We're bringing the existing spaces up to, up to regulation.
Okay. Secondly, have, did the P, Planning and Zoning have any worries about the traffic flow in this particular?
I went over it with Casey. We've tried one-way, one-way in off of Colony with an exit onto Old North Colony. It doesn't seem, presently, there doesn't seem to be any problem out there. There's never been any accident. I've, I've observed it for the peak, peak hours of operation on Saturday mornings and during the week on, you know, from eight to nine o'clock, and I don't see any traffic congestion. As, as an engineer, I don't. The flow of traffic in and out of there, because Old North Colony on the east side of the road has a very limited amount of traffic anyway, and exiting out to there is no problem. Some people do come in off of that road as well. Exiting out to Route 5 from this is clear sights, both right and left. You far exceed the required sightline distances for any traffic for, on that speed, on that road. The parking layout would be the same if it was one-way or two-way. You can't reconfigure the parking in any configuration that will give you more spaces. Believe me, we've tried it numerous times, but it's just, it's such a small lot.
In your application to the state for the easement in the front of the building, did they make any mention about changing the direction of the traffic flow?
No, they haven't.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Now, by removing the shed and replacing it with this smaller shed, you're, you're only reducing your use of the building, the building coverage use by 0.8 percent? Is that so?
Correct. 86 square feet.
Any, anyone have any other questions for their?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Now, you're not counting the parking spaces that are in the state easement?
No, that will give us a total of 20.
Not counting the ones that are in the state easement?
Correct.
How many do you have?
15.
Okay.
Without that.
Right.
20 with that.
Okay.
And we need 24.
Right. Amy, I have a question to you. How's the office, what's your thoughts on the easement with the state?
We asked for, they get a formal agreement with the encroachment on the state, for the state right away. Certainly to consider that with that pending or with evidence of such would positively impact the-
Right. And so, does the office normally see the state grant these, or do?
The state will normally grant these, yes, along the Route 5 corridor, and, but again, I draw back to, while I have my microphone, and back to the shed issue again. I believe the figure, if the shed was removed, brings the building coverage to 15.8 percent, well within what it needs to be, so.
Okay.
Of note, and, and at least gaining another space there, so. But there is significant concerns over whether there's been an issue to date over the safety of the flow, and when, whether or not some better options could exist.
And with you saying better options, does the office have a thought on what should be going on?
As comments were submitted, you know, the, straightening out of the striping, the one-way option, and neither has been presented this evening, so.
Well, we, I wouldn't, believe me, I'm not in a position that I'm going to ignore any requests when I discuss anything with the staff. You know, we did go over it with it. We took all the spaces and made them into conformance, as, as it should be anyway, with the right size. If, if you took that, believe me, I've played around with this all, if you took that shed down, if you just look at it, where are you going to, to drive into that, you're going to have to back out there into the total space anyway, and you don't get any additional space because then the tail end of that is in conflict with the last space to the north that presently exists.
Well, if you, if you moved your dumpsters over to the left, and then you, you possibly probably could get another spot in there, just by looking at it from, from what I'm looking at.
Then you're, then you're sharpening up the turn, making it less feasible for a car to be able to turn in. Now, a car heading north and then turning right to get into the spot where the dumpsters are would, would pose a problem. That wouldn't be done, and that's why we're leaving that as employee parking.
I, I think part of the problem with the shed is, is the lack of getting a permit for it.
Again, that's beyond, that's-
But he said he replaced it. So, I mean, you can say, in my opinion, just my, in my opinion, if you want to talk about it, is that, yes, it was their prior owner's, fine, but that doesn't, you know, dissolve you of any issue. When he went to put a new shed up, he should have come up to the office and asked about it and got a permit, and then that would have straightened out that problem from way back when. And now it's becoming an issue because of the coverage, and, you know, asking for forgiveness afterwards sometimes is hard to do.
All right. The other option would be that we, we put a smaller shed in. I mean, all the thing is-
You'd still have to come and get a permit for the shed.
I agree.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, the shed is of such importance that taking the shed away and getting, trying to get a parking space up there, which I advise against it because you're not going to have any, it's not going to be a better situation, but without the shed, their operation is virtually, yeah.
I mean, we put everything in the shed, so if you guys take it out, then you're just going to be stuck with the stuff inside, you know what I mean? So we have no space to put anything. I mean, everything is in the shed, so.
For example, what are you?
Like, coffee cups, whatever you can imagine, the plates or the-
Your supplies.
Supplies, and everything is in there, so. I mean, we have no space.
Ms. Torres?
Mr. Race?
I'm curious, the shed size. What size can you put up without a permit?
Well, any shed or any alteration to this site would require a modification to a site plan, or in this case, a site plan altogether.
Commercial.
Doesn't matter, correct?
Commercial, so it's different than...
Oh, it would have, correct. It's not like your residential zones that...
Because I know in residential, I think you can just put up a shed and not get permits now.
That is not the case here. It's an alteration to the site plan, so we would have to modify it. And in this case, we're going for the initial site plan. And the increased capacity from the service to the added patio perhaps is necessitating additional storage as well.
So your office right now can actually order the shed off the property because it doesn't have a permit, correct?
The applicant will still need to go through planning and zoning approval, site plan approval, following this evening, following any variance requests being approved or denied. But they still have site plan approval pending, which is why the Planning and Zoning Commission has exercised their right to express their concerns or their views to date.
Planning and zoning can require it to be removed, then, right?
Planning and zoning can approve or not approve a site planned that's from here. That still needs to go through that course.
Okay. Any other comments here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Amy, I just had a quick question. I think you mentioned earlier, site plan. Did you say violation at one point? And my question is, if you did, what was the violation?
Yes, in fact, this is a result of a violation of site plan approval, in essence, or site plan violation of which there was none, drawn to light as a result of the patio addition. The remediation course was to make it legal and do the, you know, follow the necessary channels, which is why we are here, both in front of the Board of Appeals and Planning and Zoning Commission, to remediate that. But this is ultimately because there was no approval gained for that extended use.
Oh, for the patio.
Extended use, that is correct, and at all. There was not for a prior business owner either, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, your side?
Oh, I just had a couple more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then, there was a mention earlier of non-conforming use in three years. Can you explain what you meant by the three-year period?
In Connecticut, any non-conformity of a zoning violation goes uncontested for a period of three years. Then it's existing non-conforming, and is allowed to stay. But being that we are coming before Planning Commission for something, you know, something on that site, now the town has another bite at the apple, if you will, and says, okay, anything that you have on there that's non-conforming now, we can make you either bring it up to conformity or get a variance on it. And so that brings us before you to get a variance on. Now, what we try to do is try to bring some of the stuff into conformity, the size of the parking spaces, both standard and handicap. The landscaping, we've got to augment the landscaping on one side. You can't, and the sidewalks, I mean, there's no sidewalks on any of these existing facilities. And I know the facilities immediately to the south of us that have just come recently before the commission, Planning Commission for Site Plan Approval, they don't have sidewalks either. It's an existing non, you know, it's not feasible to put them in there right now. You know, we do, we're stuck with a hardship with having three frontages on three streets. If this was a blank page right now and you came in, we'd have to have sidewalks on all three sides. That isn't the case, you know. We're dealing with an existing non-conforming lot in many ways, shape and size-wise, and trying to, you know, the position of the existing building is an inconformity. It's, you have a 50-foot setback, 50-foot setback from both sides, you can't build a building on it.
And then have you actually done the calculations to find out, to figure out how many more spaces you could fit there without the shed in the back? Is it, it looks like to me it's either one or two, but it's not fair to me.
If we didn't have to have dumpsters, you could put a space there. If you took the shed out, you could put a space there. I'm not saying you can't. But the configuration of the spots would make it very difficult as you could look at the car going, a person driving from the driveway up north in an orderly direction to get into that spot. He's going to have to turn and park parallel to the last spot. Now, he's also backing in to where the building is. I mean, if you took the shed and the dumpsters away, that would be an employee-only parking spot. You'd get one more space. Now, you still have, you still don't meet the requirements for the total number of parking spaces. You're only going to pick up one space. And there, it's to their detriment because now they have no place to put the equipment that's in that shed unless they went up on the building, and that's not a feasible alternative. You know, we've looked at various alternatives on this, believe me. I've been doing this for too many years, 46 years in business. And I've done site plans all over the state. And, you know, we try and, we try and make it, and try and meet all the requirements that you can. And that's why we sit down with the staff prior to putting a plan in, and we listen to their comments. But, believe me, we're more in tune with the site than somebody looking at it just freshly. And nothing against the planning staff, but we've tried a lot of combinations on it.
The other question I have is, I took a look at your, the site map that was originally submitted, and I did not see the trash containers listed on the original plan, but they're here on this one. And I guess the question I have is, was there a reason why it wasn't submitted on the original?
I don't know what plans don't have the trash containers on it.
Yeah, well, I have, I have the original one here. Go on, take a look.
Well, that was under the original, original application. That was under the original application for the patio. And we weren't, I guess we didn't, I don't know why they weren't located. They should have been located. It was just an oversight on our side that they weren't there. Because they've always been there.
One of the other suggestions from the Planning and Zoning Office was that if you do have an agreement for off-street parking, that you provide a written permanent agreement for our review. Is there such an agreement, and has it been provided?
With the state?
Yeah, with the state or anyone else, a private owner.
Do you have, you have an issue?
Yeah, the owner before us, he has the agreement, so we will continue to use the same agreement. So he has it, but we can't find it. So he has the paper.
That's for the employee parking?
Space, yeah.
Not for the state. That's for the one, for the property across, on the other side of Beaumont Avenue.
Yeah, I think you said earlier that the employees park somewhere else off-site. And I guess, you know, to the extent that there's an agreement in place, a written agreement, it would be helpful to have that, to, I think maybe people would feel more comfortable.
I don't want to mislead the commission. Now, it's not, you can do that formally, and that would run with the land. But that's not the agreement they have. They have an agreement, you know, as long as that person owns it, and it's almost like a license, you know. But it's not a formal agreement where, if somebody says you can have 10 parking places on my land and forever, then that reduces the use that that person could put on their land. Because they're going to always have to provide that parking. And that's not what the situation is here. It's a lucid rate, it's a license agreement, if you will. They're, okay, I'll let you park your 10 places over here until such time is, it's, I'm going to do something different, all right? But that's different than the one that we're getting with the state also.
I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Amy, I just had a couple of quick questions for you, so I understand the situation we're in here. There's a site plan pending currently with Planning and Zoning?
They will, there will be, their public hearing has not been opened yet. They will be returning to the Planning and Zoning Commission following this evening for its site plan approval. So no decisions have been made, no action has been taken at this point.
Okay, does it, just logically, does it make sense for Planning and Zoning to do that first? Or is that just dependent on our actions?
If we cannot, we need to make a determination on whether or not we will vary the regulations regarding these five issues before site plan approval can be addressed.
Okay, and I apologize, I'm not as familiar with Planning and Zoning operations, so can Planning and Zoning roll any of this back if we grant a variance?
To return it, overturn it?
Right.
You have the authority to grant or to deny the variance, and it moves forward from there. They can address the site plan issues in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission from there. And that's where they'll have to adhere to screening for such things as dumpsters has come up and whatnot.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sense of the letter that we received tonight from Planning and Zoning basically saying that they're looking into this. And I'm just trying to ascertain how that impacts sort of what we're doing here tonight.
It's a right of the Planning and Zoning Commission to issue a report as was cited in that, you know, by, per the zoning regulations, especially when there's extreme concern that they can approve a site plan as submitted. And the application was submitted already, it has not been acted on or heard yet. And these are concerns that the commission has, that they can move forward without addressing.
Okay, so, just a hypothetical situation. If all of these variances are denied tonight, and they go to Planning and Zoning for the site plan approval, can they then come back after words and discuss these issues again pending the outcome of?
They can follow the same procedure for any denial of, should that be the outcome of a variance of something significantly different, or the time has elapsed? Per statute, they could return. However, if you deny it, then the site plan that is submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission will have to include some amendments that don't require these variances and such.
Okay, thank you. And I don't want to put you in a tough spot, but do you feel comfortable saying whether or not you felt the applicants have been working in good faith with the office, or?
There has been much coordination and working with the office. However, it is the office's position, both from the planning standpoint and from support to the Zoning Board of Appeals, that there could be a little more done.
Is there a configuration that Planning Office has seen or that the applicant has seen for a reduction of the shed size while still adding an additional parking spot?
That would, they would have to submit plans for such. However, there was commentary made directly to the applicant to address these particular issues or give consideration to these assets of their plan, the shed, the parks, some parking, all alternatives, and you have the revised submission of the map that was presented.
Okay, thank you. And to the applicant, if you thought of a configuration where you could reduce the size of the shed but still add an additional parking space? Is that, is that possible on this site?
Like I said, and I reiterate, if we take the shed off and move the dumpsters, you can get one more, and I would call it an employee parking place there. You still have the variance for the parking, okay? You don't have the variance for the shed. But without the shed, their operation is almost going to cease because that shed has been there since it was Rickson 5 under the previous couple of owners, there was a shed there because obviously they needed it for their equipment.
Right, no, I understand the importance of the shed. I guess my question is, if you reduced the size of the shed, is it possible to get another parking space in while still having a shed, just a smaller shed?
If you reduce the size of the shed by 86 square feet, that's not going to give you another space in that area.
Okay.
And again, requesting three or four parking places, a variance for three or four, to me is the same thing.
Okay.
You're not going to be able to get the total amount of parking. You can't eliminate the request for variance for parking on this site. It just isn't going to happen unless you cut the building down in size.
Right, and then just sort of one last question here. The Planning Office suggested some changes to the parking lot to make it a little more usable in terms of straightening lines, one-way driving. Is that feasible?
The one-way, I mean, I don't, the one-way works with the parking in the same position. There's not much you could do with the parking. I mean, if you angle it, you still, you don't get any more spaces, you don't get any less. If you have one way going west to east, if that's what they desire, you know, I don't see a need for it, but if they're adamant about that, it doesn't hurt. The layout doesn't change, you know.
Would you be open to the angling of the spaces? Just, I understand it doesn't add spaces, it just makes it a little more...
It's angled now, and we straightened it out because they wanted it straightened out. So we could go back to the angling again. Because if it's one-way, it would make more sense to have the angled parking on the south side because that's the way you're driving in. Instead of making a 90-degree turn, you're making a 60-degree turn.
Okay, all right. But it sounds as if you're open to those parking lot suggestions?
The only option that you have on it is go to one-way, and the parking along the south side would be angled along the north side. You'll lose a spot if you do it. And then you're talking, you're letting that first person, when they back out, there's more of a chance of that person backing out into the gutter
Okay.
as opposed to backing straight out and then turning.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mentioned a few minutes ago, well, first, mentioned about sidewalks a few minutes ago where you know of, and they are not saying anything about a sidewalk here now. But you mentioned that there have been a few businesses south of this location that have come before this commission?
Not this week, Commissioner, Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, and what do they do, though? What do they do?
Well, there are other restaurants. I know that they put a patio on one of them, but they don't have sidewalks either.
It was just the patio that they put on?
Right.
Okay, but they didn't actually have to... In other words, what I'm saying is, that wasn't, this particular situation with the violation of the patio has opened up a new site plan. So in other words, it's like you're starting from scratch with the whole building. So in that regard, versus another restaurant that just added a patio, you've come under more stipulations in terms of everything that they've mentioned here now. Plus, it's been this commission's focus on Route 5 particularly to put sidewalks in, even if they're a sidewalk to nowhere. Anything new is coming with a sidewalk. Have you considered that, or have you thought about, if we told you that? Have you considered that or have you thought about if we told you that you needed to put the sidewalks on, on the front of Colony and the front of Beaumont? Would you have an objection to that?
I don't, you'd, well, if you put the sidewalk on, on Colony Street, it would be within the state right of way. That's what normally the sidewalk is going to go. A street like that, you would put a minimum of five-foot sidewalk. You're going to lose a parking place, which we have no problem with that if you want sidewalks on it. But unless we're coming before, you know, nobody's just going to say, okay, I'm going to put sidewalks in front unless they're going before this. So if we're coming before you and you want sidewalks in front, we're going to ask, we're going to have to give up another two parking places. So now you get, we lose that variance, but we increase the variance for the parking. You follow me?
I do, but I'm saying for me.
I don't.
If you take, take that.
I didn't think that the sidewalk would interfere with at least with any of the parking that, especially the one that's out there. Measure here. One inch equals 10.
Hold on, hold on. You got to be on record. So your response to what I, when I gave you back the, the site plan and I let my colleagues know exactly where the sidewalk was going to be and that you would lose one and a half, well, two parking spots?
Two spaces.
Okay. Your comment after that, please.
Okay. Then if you want the sidewalk up on Beaumont, it really couldn't go behind the side, behind the street line. No, it would be, I'm sorry, it'd be in front of the street line. You only have about seven feet there, it would be right off the gutter. And I think there's a grade change cross slope on that that would be adverse to putting a sidewalk in there.
Okay.
And the same thing would hold place for Old Colony Road. So the only place that would be practical to put a sidewalk would be on, on North Colony grade-wise.
Thank you. One other question. Judging from all the variances that we're looking at and have to decide on tonight, hypothetically, if, oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, through staff, Amy, if the applicant was to withdraw the request for the patio, does everything go back to where it was or do they still have to improve on the site plan?
The patio brought the lack of a site plan to light. However, the patio increased the capacity, which increased your parking needs, which increased your storage needs. It all came from the expanded use of the addition of the patio, which was not, there was no permits taken for that. That was just an, an add. That answers your question. So that, it all stems from the addition of the patio. However, would they still have the need for variances, a need for site plan approval? Yes. It would not have come to light had it not been for the addition of the patio.
If I may, if I may interject, if, if we, if we said, forget putting the patio in and we're going to go home, it stays the way it is today and we don't come before the commission. And the parking is going to be what, what's out there now. The landscaping is going to be what's out there now. The shed, I dare say, would still stay because we're not coming before the commission and it's been there over the required three-year period. So it, it stays as a matter of non-conforming use. So you don't get a bite of the apple anymore unless you come before the commission, for one thing, and then you get a bite for everything.
If I may enter?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and, and Board. First of all, I believe the non-conforming three-year rule is applicable to setbacks. I don't think we can just not get away with things that are non-conforming and if nobody notices for three years, we're good, if you will. I could stand corrected, but I believe that was how I was advised. It was pertinent to setbacks.
I disagree and I would say at least to get a clarification on it, if, if you need to, to contact your town attorney on that. My understanding has always been that even the position of a shed or a building for that matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Todd, do you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you did not have the patio, you would still need use of the shed, correct?
Yeah. And that was still, it stays there now, it's just like it is today.
Okay. So there's, I mean, as far as storage in the actual building, just judging from this map, it doesn't look like there's, there's very much. In the upper right corner of the building next to the shed, it looks like there's a little area on here. What is that?
That's, that's part of the kitchen storage.
Okay. But that's not sufficient storage for operations?
No.
Okay. So if, for example, you did not get the variance for the existing sized shed, you would still be putting up, or you would still be requesting to put up a shed that would be small enough so that you would be in conformity, correct?
Well, if, we wouldn't ask for that. It would be if the town said, I, I think the town has the option, says, okay, we'll grant you the variance for the parking, we grant you the variance for landscaping on, now it's only one side because we're, we're providing landscaping on two sides and the other street side, you know, we're asking for it, but you know, if you look at Old Colony Road, you can't put any landscaping there unless we put it within the street right of way. And if that's the desire of the town, we'll put it in there, you know, knowing that it's on your property. The square footage of, would still be in contestant, you know, that we're over to by point seven tenths of a percent. I think I lost where I was going.
Okay. No, I guess, I could have, I guess what I was asking was if, basically you would be, even if you were required to make a, to have a smaller shed, you would still have a shed?
Yes.
That's, that's necessary?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess, just my opinion on the shed, for what it's worth, if, I think aesthetically, nothing is going to change much because there will be a shed there, no matter what.
Correct.
And by making the shed smaller, we may get an additional parking space. That's maybe unclear.
Yeah. I, I, I would not, I'm not going to steer you on that. I'd, I'd say, no, you're not going to. Because you're only going to get 86 space, a parking place itself is 200 square feet, 180 square feet if it's nine by eight, by 19, nine by 18, nine by 20, I'm sorry. You're not going to get another, even taking that away, you're not going to get a very feasible configuration for parking. The plus side, I think, that we did is, we're providing some landscaping to buffer, to soften the effect from Beaumont Avenue on that. And we're putting a fence screening around the dumpster, you know, which any site plan we do today, believe me, if you, you just can't put a dumpster without having some sort of screening around it because the screen will prevent anything that's loose in there, papers or anything, from flying out and getting off-site. And it's, it's sort of an objectional sight to see the back of a couple of rectangular green dumpsters filled with trash. So I mean, I, I, I look at a site plan like this as you do a plus and a minus column. Okay? The minus, yeah, the parking. And the minus, the, the sidewalk, but you're not going to, physically, physically putting a sidewalk on here doesn't benefit it. The shed is there, but it's there anyway. And if you, if they were going to, if that shed wasn't there and they needed to put a shed up, it would be smaller than what's there now, but it would still be a shed. The other side on the plus side is you're getting landscaping where there wasn't any and nobody's going to go up and put landscaping on there unless they, it was deemed required through site plan approval. So I think that there's, my own, again, I'm probably biased on this, but I think there's more on a plus column than on a negative column.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does any other commissioner have any questions?
I just have one, Mr.
Go right ahead.
Amy, we vote on this. We voting on this as a one variance or are we chopping this up? Because it's just one application number.
One application, it's five variances.
Five variances.
The individual variances will need a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Rice.
The patio area. Now, if they, if they took off 85 square feet off the patio area, would this have any effect on the plan itself?
The patio area is included in the square footage, which is the calculation toward the parking and whatnot. So 85.
So that, that, that's the problem right there.
Yeah. The, the, correct. The patio is expanding the use, which is seating capacity, which you include in the gross floor allowance. So you're saving a parking space.
I think what you're asking, that, that percentage, the 86 square feet is building coverage and patio doesn't come under building coverage.
Is that correct?
That, that's correct. That's capacity equals for parking. That's, it's capacity of the restaurant that's expanding the use. So for every 75 feet of gross floor allowance, so the patio is counted in on that. So by taking 86 feet off of the patio, you're eliminating a parking space need.
And that would help conform?
No.
No?
The patio itself increased the need for parking because it increased capacity.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Any other one commissioners have any more questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak against it? Okay, seeing none, I close the public hearing and leave it up to the commission for motions and comments, et cetera. I just have a comment that I'd like to make and that's that my take on this matter is that the planning office for years and years and years was short-staffed and did not enforce all the regulations as perhaps they should have. And that actually led to this man's problem right now because the previous owners ran it without any problem and now he's faced with this predicament of having to get five more variances. And I, I hate to deprive him of his livelihood because of someone else's mistakes. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I also think that, you know, we need to try to avoid the constraint of trade here. Here's a business that's been in town for a long time. It certainly continues to thrive and I think that we would, we would lose, you know, a good tax-paying business organization. So I need, you need to, we need to consider and think about the constraint of trade.
Absolutely.
That is the number one thing here. So maybe we need to just take a few moments just to look at everything before we vote. I'm not too sure, but there is some work in here somewhere that we could, we could do this, but I don't know if we could do it everywhere, but I think we need to think about that as number one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any, wish to make the nomination on the first one of the variances, the building coverage? I'll make a motion to approve the building coverage of 17.8% where 17% is allowed.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve, Mr. DeJardins?
No.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
And Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
I make a motion that the front yard landscape to exist only on one side be, I, I wish to make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Excuse me, that would be on the west side of the building?
I think it's on the, is it on the west, on the east side, is it?
The west side.
West side, the front.
West side and proposed on the north side.
So can we?
There, there was a second.
Yeah. We, we mentioned the exact location of the, of the landscaping.
There's a motion and a second.
Motion to approve on the west side, Mr. DeJardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
And as far as the variance to eliminate the sidewalk, although there is a requirement that there be one along the street, I make a motion to approve that since there are no sidewalks in the area at this time.
Second.
Motion to approve, zero sidewalks, Mr. DeJardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
And the front yard variance to, if 50, 50 yards required, existing right now is six feet, 30 inches and 32 feet. And that's what's going to exist with the variance. Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. DeJardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
And the variance for parking, section 6.11, required 26 spaces and they're proposing 15 spaces.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if it would be friendly to your motion, I'd like to include that the applicants continue to pursue permission from DOT to use the, the five spaces that are in the right of way.
Okay, should we make that part of the approval? Do you have that?
Do you have a second?
Motion to approve the parking with the condition that the encroachment permit is received.
Yes, to approve.
Five spaces, Mr. DeJardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bernie?
Yes.
Finally, the lot area, it's, they want the lot to stay exactly as it has. I make a motion to approve.
No, there's not, that's it.
What's that? I think, okay. Okay, you're all set. Evolved and?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Second hearing, 17004.
It's a variant request from Hearn Investments LLC for front yard setback of plus or minus 39.6. It's a variant request from Erhern Investments LLC for front yard setback of plus or minus thirty-nine point six feet, where plus or minus of thirty-nine point six feet exist, and forty feet is required. Side setback of plus or minus nineteen point three feet, where plus or minus nineteen point three feet exist, and twenty feet is required to allow recently constructed single-family residents to remain in the current location at six forty-six South Elm Street in our eighteen district.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Lockland Fitzgerald. My office is located at one fifty South Main Street here in Wallingford, Connecticut, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Erhern Investments LLC. As stated in the legal notice, my client is seeking both a front yard variance and a side yard variance. I would hope that you'd all agree that the requested variances are fairly minor in nature, six inches and nine inches. It was a newly constructed house. I, I can't tell you I know for sure exactly what happened, but I do think that if you had the opportunity to look at the plan that we submitted, you'll notice it's a slight angle on the lot line, and I think when they laid out the house, they were thinking of it a hundred percent perpendicular, and unfortunately, we're off by just a few inches. And we're hopeful that the commission will feel that this is a reasonable request under the circumstances and, and will approve the variance. Don't have a lot to say, be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Just for the record, I am going to recuse myself from any discussion on this matter. This is a parcel of land that is next door to, to my house, so I'm just going to recuse myself altogether.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, close the public hearing and open it to the commission for.
Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion to approve the application, better use of the property without altering the character of the neighborhood.
Second.
Are we doing both, front and side yard, same?
Amy, is it matter?
Yeah, they can both go together on this one.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Mr. DeJardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfert?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve last month's minutes.
I make a motion to approve the last month's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
All in favor?
Aye.